This time we will call to order the work session of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM at the Franklin County Justice Center in Carneville, Georgia. And we just note for the record that we have a quorum and all commissioners are present. So, welcome everyone and thank you for joining us tonight. At this time, Commissioner Franklin is going to give an invocation and then we'll have a pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we praise you for another day, God. And God, we praise you for this day, God, that everything that's happened, God, that we can lift you, God. And God, I pray that you touch this board, God, and when we're making decisions, God, that we'll make decisions that will be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, we need to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Westers made a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Swells has seconded the motion. All in favor of the motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Motion will carry forward to zero and the agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is public comment, as there is no one here for public comment. I'm assuming there is no public comment and we'll move on to the next section unless there's any objection. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing this week, February 20th through the 27th, as National FFA Week. We were asked by Ms. Taylor Brown of Franklin County High School to issue this on behalf of the high school FFA program. I believe Ms. Brown and her students are joining us by Zoom tonight, so if they are there, welcome. If they are not, we'll move on. At this time, we're going to ask Commissioner Foster to read the proclamation.
This is our National FFA Week proclamation. Whereas FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resources systems. And whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members. And whereas agriculture, education, and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture. And whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," give direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Therefore, we do hereby designate the week of February 20th through the 27th of 2021 as National FFA Week.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Foster. Is there a motion at this time to approve the proclamation declaring this week National FFA Week?
I'll make that motion that we declare this week, or the week of February 20th through 27th of 2021 as National FFA Week.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Foster. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Westers seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the proclamation designating this week, February 20th through 27th, as National FFA Week? Please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry forward to zero and the board approves the proclamation designating this week National FFA Week. If, I don't know if they're there, but if so, thank you. And we'll move on. Does any, we haven't had anybody here tonight and we've already actually had the public comment section. Does anyone have objections if we go back to that? Do you guys, did you guys want to make a comment tonight?
Well, we've just heard some rumors that Pilgrim's Pride is going to be wanting to put a rendering plant to, in the county and we wanted to know what's going on with that.
We don't have any information on that to release at this time. Each month, when there are planning and zoning items, they come back to the, they come before planning and zoning and then the following month, they come before the Board of Commissioners for approval or rejection. And so, so far, nothing has come through planning and zoning. The next planning and zoning is March 18th. So, if, that would be the next time that anything like that could be brought to, but it has to go through that process. Any, any kind of, any kind of change or application for a zoning or conditional use permit or whatever, you know, that has to have approval from planning and zoning, it would have to work its way through planning and zoning and then come before us. So, at this time, nothing like that has happened yet. That's not to say it wouldn't, but that's what you should look for.
So, you don't know any?
We don't have any information we can release about that.
Okay. That's what we're interested in.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move on to the next item on the agenda is 5B L-MIG Asphalt Resurfacing Project Bid Results. I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to go over the bids and the recommendations. We plan that we would consider anything for a vote on Monday?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay.
We opened, received bids over the last month or so and on February 11th, we had bid opening. And the bid opening was for the L-MIG contract for repaving the road. You got it listed in front of you. The low bid was from Stratton Sons Construction in an amount of $741,178.47. This bid does include a bid bond from FCCI Insurance Company, which is listed on the Treasury Department of Circuit 570 and is authorized to transact business in the state of Georgia. We did receive $543,955.94 in funding from GDOC for our 2021 L-MIG project. And we will fund the rest of this money through Sloss Road. It's going to be my recommendation for the March 1st meeting that we award the contract to Stratton Sons in the amount of $741,178.47. We did receive eight bids. They were the lowest bid that we received.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. I want, I want to, we'll vote on this on Monday. Just for the record, I want to read out the road list because oftentimes, we don't, you know, maybe we don't do that. And so, just so we can announce it publicly, so there's no question. There are eight roads and these are, these are portions in some cases. Are any of the roads in their entirety? Or do you know offhand? There are portions of each road and maybe even the entire road that might be resurfaced?
I think that the portion is Jackson Bridge is from Highway 145 to the first bridge. Parker Town would be to the Hart County line and the Diamond Lane would be from Salem Road to Bond Bridge. I think that the remainder of the roads are complete.
Okay. And those would be Hillshore Court, Park Street, Blue Ridge Place, Blue Water Place, and Ross Place?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. We'll consider that recommendation to award that bid on Monday night's meeting. That's our regular monthly meeting and that's Monday, March 1st. The next item on the agenda is a proposal to contract out services to spray county roadways with herbicide rather than have the county do the work in-house. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to go over that.
County Attorney John Phillips brought a proposal to me to, to contract out our spraying. And I had our ribs, Assistant Lieutenant Nick Johnson to do a cost analysis on what it costs the county to do it in-house, which I have supplied. Mr. Johnson advised me that it was about $33,858 is what it costs the county to do one spray. And $35,329 for one of the bushhogs. The theory behind using this much of spray is not this year probably, but if we continue to cut one round of bush hogging out that the county had to do, which means save us I have included a packet from DBI Services that explained what they use and their application process and gives you a detailed analysis of the cost per shoulder mile that they charge. Their DBI Services cost was $83,250 for the paved roads and $33,790 for the gravel roads. We have decided we're going to continue to maintain the gravel roads and the request is going to be to enter into contract with DBI Services for $83,250 just for the paved roads. We normally, we typically spend about $18,000 for the herbicides and they will supply all of that materials, everything that they use for the spray. We are expected to receive about $80,000 from GMA on recent storm cleanup that we've encountered with a hurricane that come through during the summer. And we're looking at using those funds to fund this project this year. So, it'll be my recommendation on the, at the March 1st meeting to enter into this contract with DBI Services for spraying the county roads.
And that, that's the paved roads and that would be two applications?
Yes.
Okay.
Two applications, I'm sorry.
All right. And the county would continue to do the gravel roads? How many times do they, would they just do the gravel roads one time?
Oh.
Or as needed?
They do it as needed. You know, the concept is a safety issue for Johnson grass is the main one. You have Johnson grass grows up above the fescue on some side of the road. It causes a visibility problem pulling out roads. And that's what we're trying to combat is to kill some of that down also.
Does it kill the fescue or?
No.
Okay.
No. I think it does kill the fescue.
But it keeps everything low?
Yes.
So, you don't have to?
But they would apply the application twice in a year.
So, in spring and summer?
Spring and summer.
Spring and summer. Commissioners, do you have other questions? Any other questions? So, so overall, if we, if we do contract that out, how much are we, are we saving versus if we did it all ourselves for like, for paved and gravel? Have we got like an overall figure?
The figure that, I won't say that we're saving this year, $33,858 is what it costs us to spray one time. If you break down what the, the contract says, they're charging $41,625. So, that's a difference of about $8,000. The savings is going to be after we get this under control, the bush hogging side of keeping up, that's costing us $35,000. So, over time, we're just going to save the county money. And, and it'll get done, I mean, our county road guys have a lot of other things that they're having to take care of. So, the bush hogging and spraying is coming in between their day-to-day operations. And once these, this company begins the process, then, I mean, it'll be a constant loopage from my understanding.
And then we'd also save on what we were spending for the herbicide, at least part of that.
And overtime of, you know, employee overtime, trying to keep up with, with the process to get it done.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We'll consider this at next week's meeting.
And also, you know, this price has not taken a fate, but equipment use, the wear and tear, the replacement values of equipment. Our spraying truck is, is an overmodel. So, I mean, that's stuff we got to maintain and replace. So, overall, I think it'll, it'll save the money, the county money in the long run. Like I said, it's not going to do the first year, but it will.
Have we ever, do you know if we've ever contracted that out before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education to rent the old C. E., Carneville Elementary School building. Mr. Harris, can you go over that with us?
Yeah, I've included a copy of the contract. The judicial system, as of our last conversation, are looking to start back with trials in middle of March. And the Judge Muffin is wanting to continue to use the old elementary school as a courtroom for that jury and also for jury trials. So, he's asked us to enter into this agreement for him to use that facility. The contract, the school system has the contract to be signed and I will have that March 1st meeting.
Okay.
Signed by Assistant Lieutenant to begin with.
And that, that's an intergo, does it actually cost us anything? I think we have to pay like a dollar a month.
A dollar.
Okay. And we're doing it for 12 months and then we have the option to extend?
And you know, and the, the contract or the agreement says that we'll do the routine maintenance at the facility as long as we're used.
And utilities?
Right.
I think I saw on there, the school system could use it if they needed to for sports if it didn't interfere.
They have cheerleaders, I think it's cheerleader practice in the gym and you know, that's going to continue to be able to continue to do that.
All right. Commissioners, do you have questions? Any questions? Okay. We'll consider, and we'll, we'll have that for Monday as well. Okay. The next item, 5E, on tonight's agenda is an analysis of compensation for public safety employees. So, I'm going to turn this part over to Mr. Harris as well.
The, it's not just the state of Georgia, but the country's in a public service, public safety employee crisis, pretty much is what you can call it. The state of Georgia is in a crisis as far as EMS wise. We're not, we don't have MECS coming out or EMTs coming out of school. And the one, we still have a lot of them coming out, but there's so many private services, now doing non-emergency transports that a lot of those employees are going there and they're paying them a very high wage to do that. It's affected the county side, not just us, it's everybody that's affected, the county employees. Sheriff's Office, I think I thought Chris Looney today, they got five opens, is that correct? Law enforcement, it's not different. You know, we, we're in a crisis for employees to perform the duties that we're, public safety duties that we're, that we've got here. To combat, combat that, counties are raising pay. I know that there are two counties that join us that have been significant pay raises for public safety. We have two other counties that set us through already on pay in our ways of the pay. This county provides a high level of service, of emergency services, EMS wise, law enforcement wise. And if we don't figure out a way to compensate, we're going to lose the good people that Right now, I have two shelves that I'm covering with part-time people. I've got one that I can't field and then I have one that's on military leave that I've had it for eight months covered. We're having, most of that's been covered, a lot of that's been covered by full-time people working, we can't open. Sheriff's Office, they've got deputies working extra time to cover these shelves. A lot of people call with emergency, they expect somebody to show up. So, my quest is to figure out a way that we can compensate a plan that we can just combat our, the pay, the pay rates that we have. So, like I said, and I mean, I, Mass County just gave them very significant rates.
What was the amount of theirs? Was that for the law enforcement and EMS?
I know on the EMS side.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure they did also the law enforcement.
What was the?
Mass County just gave them significant pay raises on the EMS side. What Mass County did, their pay raise pretty much got them up comparable to us. But we have the hospital here, the transfers, Mass County doesn't have that. Jackson County doesn't have that. Hart County does not have that. So, we, our people are trained, we have transport ventilators that our paramedics are having to be trained on, high-level care, transport ventilators. We carry pretty much any drug that you want to carry in the state of Georgia that, you know, that, there's a few that we could add, but the EMS performs at a high rate, high level and I want to keep it there. I don't want to lose my, you know, that we have that we've trained. So, I did do a cost analysis on, and minimal increases. This is a lot less increased than what's been given in other places. But a, a $0.75 an hour increase for EMS employees, that's 27 EMS employees and that's just the EMS employees that are on the med unit. I figured $21,983.79. Now, that just, that's just for the remainder of this budget year. That's not a year long number. A dollar an hour raise is $29,279.8 and a dollar 25 is $38,984.46.
What was the, what was the last option?
A dollar 25 is $38,984.46.
And that, that would be, so when you say, for instance, a dollar, that would be every employee and that would be our starting salary would also go up that high?
Yes, it would go up a dollar.
What is, what is right now the, or is it very dependent on?
The starting paramedic salary is 1603.
So, this will raise it up to, for example, to 1703?
That's correct.
Of those that do serve in that capacity, how many have been there over five years? Do you have an idea? Or long, what you would call is longer than what an average might be?
I would say, over five years, I would say 70% of them.
Okay.
It's pretty significant.
I mean, do you think it is best to just do an even pay increase if we're able to do that across the board? Or do you think it would be more reasonable since we're trying to reward those that have been faithful, even though we've been underpaying them, to do some sort of a tiered system?
I would love to do a tiered system, but in the position that we are now by pulling people, getting somebody to come to work here, then I think that across the board would be, to start with, I think that would be the best option at this time. I have broke up some, some of the raises in the past, so some of the older, longer tenured people do make a few cents more. It's not fixed, but they do make a little bit more than the new ones come in. So, on the, on the Sheriff's Office side, also have those figures in this part on a dollar an hour increase. That is for 33 employees and it's only for current employees that have a base pay rate hourly employees. And it's only for employees who have inmate contact. So, it would be for deputies and the jailers that, that actually have inmate contact inside. That is 33 employees and that number comes out just for the, the rest of this budget year at 57,638.19.
Say that number again. Can you say that you have five, you've got five openings right now?
I think we're higher than a day, but you know, if you give them a raise, they're going to leave. You have to pay overtime to fill that slot. You know, and I'm five days, you show up, as much as we have to work core extra, you know, and we, thank goodness, we're still doing the Skype thing for us. Inmate, we have to go get them a lot of time, bring them back here, just through the Skype. And the prison system's worked out some stuff to help us, but still, you've got to fill that slot at night and you know, which I've been out though, Jimmy's been done out, we've done a lot of extra stuff, but if you ain't got somebody to fill in that one seat, you gotta pay overtime to fill it, plus you gotta train somebody to come back in it. And so, if we, if we retain our employees, that's number one thing, I mean.
What would the, what would this bring up the starting salary roughly? I know it may be different for different people. What kind of range?
In the jail, they make about $11 an hour now. You go walk, go up there to McDonald's and make 13, you know, and, and we've got people that's been here like 20 years. And of course, those make a little bit more money, but.
Yeah.
Your, your people starting, starting out, we can't even get there because usually we get somebody if either because they, either left somebody else or having issues or something, you know, and we can't even get people with them jail. We never pay overtime for that and stuff.
Yeah. What are the, what are the deputies start out at roughly?
I think 15, 15 I think it is.
So, so this would bump that up maybe roughly to 12 and 16 starting and then everybody, everybody would get, you know, an increase, but it would drag everybody up, pull everybody up?
Okay, that, that's not, everyone of the employees are in that.
Right. The inmate contact.
Yeah. Because it's a ground level here, 33 employees.
We, I think, you know, and this has got, we have to think that the end of the fiscal year is coming up. I think it should be, I hope, it'd be a priority of the board that we look at, you know, some sort of COLA again each year because in my mind, that's another way we can slowly bring everybody up to parity, you know? And that's a long, that's a long view. I mean, it's a little bit every year. But I do think this is important. How would we, how would we, how would, what are, is our approach to funding this? Like, just through the end of this fiscal year?
The, I pulled the cares funding available and there's money there to fund it. Now, that's, that, that doesn't help come, you know?
At the next?
The cares funding is going to run.
Right.
You know, so, but for this moment, that money can be pulled from the cares.
That, that could sort of be a bridge for.
Next year.
The time being until we get to that, that budget discussion and see what we can work into the budget.
What does that translate to a full fiscal year increase, budget increase? These numbers were for just kind of the remainder of?
Right. Through the end of the.
The fiscal year. Right?
I figured for, and so, it's going to be a little lower than what I just told you because I figured these numbers for February also. So, let's see, that's.
You could email it to us.
Yeah, I can figure it out. I can bank it dollars.
I was just curious so that we have kind of a long view of what the additional expense would be.
Could we, could we do it for, if, well, if we want to look at this on Monday, we could have some more fuller figures.
Yeah, I can, I can have.
How, how do we feel about, about do, I mean?
I, I just want to say that this is something, I've been on this board now for, this is, I'm going in my seventh year. And this is something I've pushed for since I've come on board, is, is getting the pay up where it needed to be for, for our EMS, for our Sheriff's Department and everything because I know I can speak for me and I'm, I'm sure Kyle will say the same thing. When you see firsthand what these men and women do on a daily basis, there's, there's, and I'm not going to say there's nobody else in the county that doesn't deserve it because all of our employees do a great job. But these folks are on that front line and they're, they're seeing things and they're dealing with things on a daily basis that most folks will never see and most folks will never comprehend. I wasn't at that wreck on the interstate, but I've been told by firsthand from people that were there. These folks are affected by this the rest of their life with what they had to see. I mean, and that's just one, one accident that they attended and that's, that's with them the rest of their life. They don't carry, they don't just leave it at the door when they leave that. They don't carry, they don't just leave it at the door when they leave that EMS station or they leave the Sheriff's Department. That goes home, it affects their families and everybody. And then you throw in all of this with, with the COVID virus, you know, and, and they're, they're handling patients, they're handling suspects on scenes and everything, and they don't know what they're getting into. They don't know, you know, where this person's been, what this person's been doing, but yet they go to every call. And, and, I mean, me personally, I felt like they should have had hazard pay, especially when this COVID went into effect. But, I mean, I, I'm, I'm all for us seeing what we can work out, not just for this to be a stepping stone, but in our, our budget for next year, to, to get them up to where we can retain these folks. We've been lucky on the EMS side to be able to retain the ones we have. We've lost some good ones too. And Sheriff's done, you know, I think Sheriff's done a good job retaining what he's been able to retain, but, you know, when it all comes down to it, pays a big issue, and, you know, we, we have to be competitive with everybody around us, or we're going to continue to train everybody and then lose them to somebody else.
And, and, you know, we, we train every month. I have a training officer, and he's one of my cats, Brandon Gibson, he's passionate about, he has a sign above the door that says the standard. This is the standard we're going to operate at. And he trains to that standard, to get people to be the best that they can be, and we have some great people here. And I don't want to see us train all these people and then to go somewhere else and work. You know, and, and, and I, I wouldn't even compare, because private service in industry, which is Dallas, is transport stuff, to that nature, which is a big money business. They're paying.
Okay. We, guys, we, we actually voted earlier to approve that proclamation, but at the end of this meeting, we will have, we'll take a picture of us after we sign it. So if you guys want to hang on, we're near the end of the meeting, we'll do that. But we're glad to have you join us. Hello?
But private, the private industry is paying medics twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour to come do dialysis transport. Medics, EMTs are making more than our medics make here. But most, a lot of people want to do emergency medicine in the field or county or wherever. And like I said, it's, it's a, it's a nationwide pandemic with EMS people and law enforcement. I keep saying EMS people, that's what I'm meaning, to, to get involved. And that's why everybody keeps stepping money up, because they've got to, if they're going to provide a service, then they've got to have employees to provide a service. So, and we have, we have dedicated employees, that's why, you know, our, our group of them have been here for a long time, and they care about this county, and they care about the precious care that we provide, and most of them live here, so they want to see being a great service.
You know, the, the thing about it is, none of them went into, to these positions because it was going to make them a millionaire. They went into these positions because that's, that's what their calling was. Their, their calling was to serve, to protect, and, and to try to save a life. And, you know, they're not, I don't, I don't think it's coming to us for them to become rich and become millionaires, it's, it's to take care of the ones that take care of us.
And we send our EMTs to the paramedic school, so we pay, we don't pay for their school, we pay for their time, so when they get to school during, on their own shield, and they have to take our time, we cover their time.
Yeah.
So we have a good bit invested there, but majority of them give us, and I, what I ask for is if I do that, then you give me two years of service here. And majority of them do that. I have had some of them that's got out of school and left.
They're gone.
But we're already investing that money in them, we're investing training every month, and pay, we pay them to come to training, because we require them to come. And so we have a lot invested in these medics too. It's three years of school to get through paramedic school, three years of technical school, EMT, and then core class, core class is EMT school, more core, core class is a paramedic school, is a three-year endeavor.
Well, for Monday, can you have, we need the full, we'll get the full fiscal year amounts, plus the amounts you gave us tonight, what it's going to take to get through the rest of the year, but can we get a report too on how much of the care's funding money that we have left that we haven't used? And you might already have that.
Yes, I, I looked at that. Oh, three hundred and twelve thousand four fifty-one seventy-one is what I pulled up as the spreadsheet. There's more money there, but that's what's not allocated to.
What do we have to spend that money by?
We, we don't, because we, we used it to pay back public safety salaries to March of last year, so that freed it up, so that money, we can spend it any way we want.
There were a couple of projects we were considering.
We did.
One of them was a coroner's.
Mm-hmm, that, we, we approved that.
And cardiac monitors that we're going to have, that we got replaced for living their life and.
Well, we've already considered that money.
Yes.
So this is, that money's already been taken out of there, this is what we've got left.
Can, can we see a li, I mean, we have kind of an open-ended list of things we might use that for, can we get that from, just so we can have that, or maybe email that over, just so we can look at that and see what, you know, what we had versus what we might use it for? That'd be helpful too, to know what else is left on that list. I know we, we probably have it somewhere, but you might not put your hands, you know which list I'm talking about?
That's what I, that's where I got that number from.
Okay, alright.
I can, I can email that spreadsheet too.
One, oh, I'm sorry, Glenn.
Okay, if you're talking about doing the whole year, now, are you talking about doing the whole year for everybody as in all employees, or are you doing, you're still doing at the ground level?
Just, just the ones that he, that, just the ones for, for the Sheriff's Department to be the ones that have contact with inmates, that would get the raise, and then the, and then even, including the starting salary. The rest would be, we would look at as when we do the COLA, you know, the COLAs at the, at the beginning of next fiscal year, which would be
July.
Yeah, July. So this would still be just for that, for that designated group. Mr. Franklin?
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Mr. Foster?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Let, uh, let's get that information. This year, I feel like we have, we have done, we've come a long way, because not only, we did the raise, we've done every year the COLA, we, we also in February did, did the hazard, although we haven't done it all along, we did do the lump sum, that was in February, right? And so if we can do this, I, I think it, I mean, I think, I agree with you, it's important, and it sends a powerful message to our employees, and maybe it will help with some of the attrition that we're seeing.
Well, it's, it's protecting our employees, it's also protecting our citizens.
That's right.
I mean, we want the best people
Serving us.
on the job, helping out. I have older parents that one day may use those services.
I can have a deputy leave here, go to Jackson County and make more in that jail than we're supposed to.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't, you don't have to compare anything with Jackson County, but that's, we have, we have to prepare with, that's what we have to live with.
How, how many, how many deputies do you think, like, in a year, on average, would you lose for something like that, where they're going somewhere else?
Probably at least five.
Five a year?
And that's not including detention officers, but if they leave, we get them certified here in jail, they go up there, they like looking for all an hour raise, just to go to Jackson County.
Just go to Jackson County. So see, that's a huge, we need to do something to combat that.
In Banks County, they got their raise, and I've lost several in Banks County.
Yeah.
Yeah, Banks County is one of the, the ones that gave a significant raise.
What was their raise? How much did they? Or what?
I can't tell you the exact number, I know it was two, oh, a good bit over two dollars.
How, how, size-wise, how, how does their, their number, like, for, for EMS and the sheriff's deputies, the ones we're looking at, how do we compare size, number of individuals to a county like that? Are they a bigger county or a smaller county?
I think actually they're smaller.
Banks County?
They get a lot of tax revenue though.
Yeah, I haven't seen their call volume, but they run, their call volume is less than ours.
Is less?
Yes.
Okay. So, so for Monday, do the full, the, the, to the end of this fiscal year, which you, you just gave us, but then also for what it would cost for a full fiscal year, because we're going to need that for budgets that's coming up.
And one thing we have to, I mean, given, if, if you give them seventy-five cents or a dollar, we just got to make sure that when we talk about the end of the year, if you add COLA, on what the sixteen dollars they make now, that's forty-eight cents, you know, you, so we got to make sure that we don't lessen the gap again.
Yeah. Well, in my, my mind, I mean, when we do the COLA, that would apply to everybody. I mean, we, this year, we carved out an exception, if you were here less than a year, you, you didn't get it until you reached twelve months. But otherwise, I mean, I felt like that was pretty fair. But
I just was, when we was talking about the COLA, I just was trying to figure, you know, I said it's forty-eight cents. If you gave a dollar, and then, and then at the end of the year, didn't yield
Yeah.
the COLA side, then you're going backwards.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Alright, any other questions?
Will this bring us back closer to Banks and Madison, or?
The numbers that I have, yes, I mean, Banks, the number that I had from them, and working on this today through the auditors and all, I just, employees that I have that work there, also, I have, I have two employees that work at Jack, that work in Jackson County full-time also. So they leave, they're going to leave and go to Jackson County, because they're, I mean, Jackson County is seventeen eighty-six to eighteen dollars, and my employee that works there full-time said that they're fixing to get another raise.
And they're already there, they're already in foots on the door there.
He said seventeen eighty-six to eighteen, Stephen is sixteen to eighteen dollars. Now, they have a lot of tenured people there that make more than they are paying, I'm sure. So see, Banks was about sixteen seventy, Jackson's about eighteen and seventeen, Stephen's sixteen to eighteen. Hart has a, they have a tenure scale, a pay scale, so you don't start out that much more than all, you don't start out as high at Hart as you do here, but that their tenure scale makes your pay go up quickly, so. And Jackson is, I mean, Madison, with their pay rate is comparable to what we are, pretty much, so. I'm just trying to get ahead of it before I start leaving, that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
But, and, and that kind of thing's going to always, it's going to always be a kind of front and center, because what we do, you know, somebody's, it's going to continually go up, which is not a bad thing, we just need to try to stay, you know, even with it, because I think is, we'll continue to lose employees if we don't maintain some kind of parity with our comp, basically, it's our competition, because that's who we're losing, our good people to.
And everybody touches us.
Yep.
You know, Jackson doesn't touch us. Jackson's in a unique situation, something that has so much growth and so much industry in their tax base, it's just, it's hard to compete with Jackson, I understand that completely. But we got to compete with Banks, Hart, Stephen, counties that touch us, if not, we're going to be in this. And we're, the country's already in a mess as far as either public service employees, public safety employees, I don't know how to fix that. Like I said, as far as a medic, he goes to school three years, or he can go next year and have a biggest injury to make twice the money, and we're happy about it.
The president's already talked about fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage, so that's going to kill us too.
Yep.
The thing is, I mean, in my opinion, we've got great people, and we've got to be aggressive on all four, in making sure we keep them.
I agree.
I'll take that off. This is a little bit sad, but.
Anybody else have any questions before we move on? Okay. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the manager's report, Mr. Harris, do you have anything else?
Uh, the only time I had the auditorium was back in the office this week. I spoke to Chris before I left to come down here. He said by the time they leave this week, they should hopefully about ninety percent complete, and that doesn't count the, you know, if they got a right report. Still not really, not that we might have questioned extension, but also not really not that we want to, so, but they are, they are in-house and working out the ability to get, get the stuff that they need, so.
Okay.
I did want to mention, we have a the tax assessors in a bathroom for also into the kitchen that I had to approve in the last week to get that started. And that's going to cost us about fifteen thousand dollars to fix that, that's not allocated, so I felt like it was something that we had to, we had to get over now, so. That was approved on two nineteen with IBC instructions, and that's all I have.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I want to remind everybody, we're going to meet again next Monday, and that's March the first, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty, we have a public hearing, and then again at six o'clock for a regular board meeting. Tonight, I believe, is the last meeting, Mr. Harris is our official interim county manager, so we just want to thank you again, you've done a fantastic job, and I, I think I speak for everybody, we appreciate it very much. The, I talked to Joey Dorsey today, he said they're having a meeting tonight, and they're going to open their bids for the airport authority audit, the, the bids they received, and they opened those in an open meeting, and then he said he'll get back with us, they're going to come up with some alternative dates, they want to look at having a joint meeting in mid-March to, for us to look at those and make a decision on that. So as soon as we hear from them, we'll share that with everybody, and then we can see what days would work best. I did give him some blackout dates that we absolutely probably couldn't do it because of other commitments, but he's, he said he would work, try to work around that and get some options for us, so hopefully we'll have that cleared up pretty soon.
And I spoke to Terrell Partain yesterday on the way home, and as soon as he's supposed to send me, email me those.
Okay. And then y'all, if you can hang around just a minute, we'll take a picture after, for the proclamation. Commissioner Franklin, do you have any announcements?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Foster?
Nothing.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wester? Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wester makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin seconds the motion, all in favor, signify a raising right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries four oh, and we stand adjourned, thank you.